Good evening, everyone. Let's call the April, I was going to say March, the April Board meeting to order, and we'll welcome in our Girl Scout troop for 876. Everybody stand, please. Whoa, we are rolling here. Okay, I knew, I was ready for that. All right, well, welcome, everybody. We are off to a rollingly good start. Okay. With that, I would like to welcome everybody here. Would you like to start us off for the evening?
Certainly. It's great to see everyone here. We are officially in spring on the calendar. We're just waiting for the weather to catch up. But to provide a welcome to Eastern Middle School, I'd call on the principal, Dr. Judy Walton, to provide the welcome tonight. Dr. Walton?
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Superintendent Beam, my colleagues in Forest Hills and our community members, welcome to Eastern Middle School. Just want to say a quick thanks to our PTO for the refreshments back there. Also, if anyone needs to use the restroom while we're here, it's down that hallway. But now that I've told you that, everybody will know what you're going to do when you walk down there. And just a welcome to Mr. Mashad as our newest board member.
Thank you. Do we want to go right on, yeah, go right into our instructional highlight? Take it away.
Awesome. Thank you. You know, since this is our last meeting before Teacher Appreciation Week, I'm wondering if you would just indulge me for a minute to talk about the art of teaching. Teaching is fun, it's challenging, it's authentic, it's soul-filling, sometimes it's heartbreaking, it's time-consuming, it's an act of love. It's innovative, it's passionate, it's dedicated, and that was just today. Okay? Every day, our teachers enable their students to learn and grow. They help them become masterful readers and writers, problem solvers, and critical thinkers. In addition, we empower our students to become global citizens so that their voices may be heard. We are preparing the next generation, and while that is a very daunting responsibility, we embrace it because we believe that our actions will leave our world in a better place. And so, right now, I'd just like to invite any educator in attendance tonight to stand and be recognized for your contributions to our children. Thank you. There are many things that make Eastern Middle School unique and wonderful. We are the only 6'8" middle school in our district, having successfully transitioned 6th graders from our two feeder elementary schools in the fall of 2020, when we really didn't have that much else going on. We're fortunate to host our district's middle school autism spectrum disorder, and we have a little plug tonight for Autism Acceptance Month. We're the only middle school in our district to share our building with a high school, which enables us to more easily connect older students with younger students as mentors, tutors, and role models. In addition to successfully transitioning a new grade level during the pandemic, we also successfully launched our STEM electives for our 6th, 7th, and 8th graders in Project Lead the Way. And it's this last piece that our students are going to talk to you about tonight. Project Lead the Way is a STEM-based curriculum. It provides transformative learning experiences for students and for teachers. Through classes such as design and modeling, flight and space, and medical detectives, and next year we'll be adding green architecture, our learners are empowered to develop in-demand knowledge and skills they will need to thrive. In other words, to be future-proof. Our learners engage in hands-on activities, solve real-world problems, and are inspired to reimagine how they see themselves as learners. And this is just a quick peek at what we're doing right now, and I'm going to invite up Lana, Logan, and Xander to talk about 6th grade design and modeling.
Hi, my name is Lana Phibis, and this year I've participated in many projects for Project Lead the Way, for design and modeling. One project we did was where we designed an ankle foot orthosis with requirements to fit a certain patient's needs. These patients had cerebral palsy, which was a disease that causes other issues with movement and posture, and sometimes can affect the brain. One requirement was to make sure the patient's foot doesn't point downward, and the foot could only be flat and point up so they could walk properly. I really enjoyed this project because it allowed me to learn new things about other people. This combined science, technology, engineering, and math with real-life problems that made us think outside the box to figure out how to figure out the patient's needs. I really enjoyed design and modeling in all the projects we do.
Hi, everyone. My name is Xander. Today, I will be talking about the AFO Foot Orthosis Project. One thing I liked about the AFO is having a budget and being able to purchase items from the teacher in order to improve your AFO and make it better. Another thing I liked about the project was how everybody had to work together in order to make our final project. Lastly, I really enjoyed being able to take pictures of the AFO and putting them in a slideshow to present to the class. Thank you all for listening to my presentation today.
And now, I'd like to invite up Hayden Decrow, who's going to talk about flight and space.
Hi, my name is Hayden Decrow. I participated in flight and space in the first semester of our year. I love flight and space because of the different obstacles you have to overcome while working with your peers. Flight and space is a great class to help build teamwork and communication. You use these skills a lot in class because you are constantly collaborating with your partner for many projects. One project, including the mission to Mars. In this project, you work with a partner to choose which rocket you will be taking to Mars. Then you have to find the best place to land. There are many little pieces of information you have to take note of when deciding where to land, including temperature and sun radiation. Finally, you build a prototype space lander and drop it from the stairwell balcony, and get graded on how well your prototype holds up in the fall and the steadiness of its descent. Overall, flight and space is a great class. I feel extremely lucky to have the opportunity to participate in a class like this.
And now Nina, Jasmine, and Owen, perhaps not in that order, to talk about medical detectives.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Mand, and I would like to share some thoughts with you about PLTW Medical Detectives. I think it proposes many opportunities to those who are interested in pursuing a career in the medical field, as well as those who are still figuring it out. Thanks to Mrs. McCullough, we have a memorable experience doing lab experiments like dissecting the sheep brain. I am grateful for Eastern Middle School for having these electives available to students, and I think that's what makes our school unique.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Owen Huffnagle. I'm a student in Ms. McCullough's Medical Detectives class. I wanted to share with you two things that stand out with me. The first is the way we learn. For example, we dissected a sheep brain to visualize what we have learned about previously rather than looking at a picture on a page. The next and final thing that stands out the most in this class is the teacher. I think Ms. McCullough creates a very exciting learning environment that's interactive and helps us expand our knowledge as far as we want. I really love medical detectives, and I feel very lucky to have this class available at our school.
Good evening. I'm Nina Denenberg, and I have been fortunate enough to have taken two PLTW classes over the past two years here at Eastern Middle School. Last year, I had the opportunity to take PLTW Flight and Space, and this year, I have been studying PLTW Medical Detectives. After two amazing years at Goodwill Environmental School, I was worried that I would not be able to work hands-on anymore. Then the PLTW program changed that for me and many others. From making model airplanes to dissecting sheep brains, these courses are able to give students the ability to get out of their chairs, collaborate with others, problem-solve, and explore further beyond their textbooks. This program gives so many fun and intriguing experiences to students that will make them want to come to class and learn. This is why I love the PLTW program and would recommend these courses to any incoming students. Thank you.
And then, just last, like I said, next year we'll be adding green architecture, and this is really about thinking about how can we find more sustainable housing in an eco-friendly way in our world? And so, one of the culminating projects for students next year will be to design a home out of a shipping container, and also learn to use the 3D architectural design software that we have. So, just to recap, you know, our kids have had some great experiences. Nationally, across Project Lead the Way, 87% of kids in the 6th through 8th grade age range say that their PLTW course made them more interested in STEM. And so, we are really happy that we were supported by the instruction office and by everyone in Forest Hills to bring this opportunity to our kids here. And I'm not sure if anyone has any questions for the kids?
Oh, of course we do. So, my problem with this is I would want to take every class. How do you guys choose?
I would say I chose based on what I want to do in my future. Like, I know that I'm really into, like, the medical field. I've always wanted to be a vet or a surgeon, so that was how I kind of picked that course to take. It just, it kind of highlighted my interests.
Okay, good. Anybody else?
I would say something similar. For me, I want to be a biologist, so I chose this route, but I also just like, I mean, that's like, delivery jacket, which is not PLTW, but you got to experience two different things, and you got to choose which one you like better. So, you can experience all of them and choose which one you like more.
Excellent. All right.
For 6th grade, every 6th grader gets design and modeling.
Excellent. All right, any other questions?
I did want to ask a question because I just can't help it. You know, as a teacher myself, I want to hear you say more about this. So, I know a lot of problem-solving goes into these projects. Was there, for any of you, a point in which you surprised yourself when you learned something new? Or it just really stood out to you in a moment, that aha? I did, you know, go ahead. Yeah?
How I somehow not managed to set myself at all with the exact tone I'm in.
Yeah, so, like, I surprised myself. Like, we made, when we made our model for the, like, the Mars lander, like, I had, like, I did not think at all, to be honest with you, that it was going to work. Like, my model was going to work, and it worked well.
All right, thank you. Well, bottle up that enthusiasm for all the classes. Love it.
Madam President?
Superintendent?
Sure. I would just like to thank our teachers who have been adventurous to branch out and receive the training to provide these STEM programs. Thank you to Jill McCullough and our science teachers and others, and thanks to you, Judy, for supporting all that work here. And also, as we're looking to expand Project Lead the Way to other schools around the district as well, so thanks for being a pioneer in this, and most importantly, thanks to all of our student presenters here tonight. I really appreciate you taking the time to share your learning and your enthusiasm for your learning as well. It came through very much, so thank you all.
All right. Well, we have more interesting presentations here. So, Superintendent Beam, would you like to kick us off in our district report on college and career readiness?
Certainly. As we think about learning beyond high school, we know that for our students, that's going to involve some sort of career eventually. And what we're seeing today is that there are multiple pathways to get to those careers. It's not just leaving here at graduation, going right into a four-year undergraduate university. We're seeing more and more, a sort of, I'll call it a GI bill from employers, where we have students going to work for employers. They're learning really important, cutting-edge skills, the latest technologies in many domains and many areas. And then employers are saying, hey, I will pay for your college tuition if you want to go and get additional skills and training. So, we're seeing that. We're certainly seeing, again, pathways that have existed before. Service to our nation through military service. We're seeing students that go off, as I said, to the world of work, to two-year colleges. We have a great community college in the area, and four-year colleges and universities. There are more pathways than ever before, and that's a wonderful thing. And what we're trying to do is to not only increase the awareness of those pathways, but where those pathways may lead as well for students. And thinking about all the different jobs that are out there, we can think of the jobs that are familiar to so many people, but our next presenter's going to tell us about the whole myriad of jobs, and she'll actually, I don't want to quote the number because I may get it wrong, but she will help me with this, and all the different careers and job lines that are out there. But I'd like to call Nicole Decrow, who is our career counselor here at Eastern High School, in a pilot program that we launched here second semester. Nicole has been a guidance counselor for us, and we were able to steal her away from a neighboring district, but she has a passion for this work. And with the leadership of Amy Palo, her principal here, and talking about helping kids to navigate that path and families to navigate that path as well, as to what learning looks like beyond high school and where that eventually leads in a career as well. So, Nicole, I'll turn the podium over to you.
Thank you for having me. Hard act to follow up, you guys. Awesome job. And it was fun to hear some of your responses about just your career interests, so I can't wait to talk to you when you're in high school. To just get started, like he said, my job here started in January in this specific role, and so my goal here today is just to kind of explain to you all what that role looks like and the things that we'll be working towards at Eastern High School. So, to distill down a lot of research and data and information, when students come in and are always like, where do I start? Career exploration is really three steps repeated. I'm not sure how many people in this audience have had more than one career in my 40s. I'm still reassessing my career exploration cycle, but, so, to start off, self-awareness is really just understanding yourself, what your strengths are, things that you are interested in, that you don't like, aversions you have, right? Just who you are. And then, career exposure, and that second piece is the one that I think is really ripe for opportunity with high school students. You were kind of mentioning that. We all know doctor, lawyer, teacher, but we don't all know all of the thousands of careers that are out there. And there isn't a specific number because there's new ones every day, right? But kids don't know all of the things that are out there, so giving them exposure, casting a really wide net, and just showing them all the things that are out there. And it might not speak to them today, but maybe a few years down the road, they'll remember, oh, that one career really does speak to the things that are my strengths. So, looking at the targeted, looking at the careers and then honing in that targeted career exploration is really taking, what do I know about myself? What careers are out there, and which ones do I want to research more? And you can look at careers through job shadowing, informational interviews, which I'll talk more about, research online, there's lots of different ways, but just finding more information and seeing if it's a good fit. Sorry, I'm learning the thing. Okay. So, the Michigan Career Development Model was developed in 2018. It has eight targets, and underneath each of those targets, it has suggested activities. If you look at all eight of those targets, you could put each one of those under a category of either, is that a self-awareness activity? Is that a career exposure activity? Or is that a more targeted research activity? So, those are kind of the model, that's the model that the state has set forth that we're working towards. So, my role is to fulfill that Michigan Career Development Model, but in a way that's beneficial to students. My goal is not to just plow through and check things off the list. I really want to make it meaningful for kids, and so, we're really lucky to have this programming opportunity that I can deliver a lot of career exploration in smaller doses versus really just one and done. So, doing that, and then, my next objective is engaging our community. We have a wonderful community, and engaging them in meaningful career partnerships, which I'll talk about more. So, in my role, I have two ways of accomplishing those goals. I work in doing individual student support, which I'll talk about, and then I also work with whole-school programming, which I'll get to. So, individual student support, any student, parent, counselor can initiate a meeting with me, so I, students can sign up for a meeting with me, just like you could sign up for a meeting with a regular school counselor. We usually meet two to three times. I joke with kids when they come in and say, so, 30 minutes, and you're going to tell me what I'm going to be when I grow up, right? And I'm like, well, it's not that simple. So, we just, we meet, we talk about where they're at, and as you can imagine, as you kind of saw here, it can be a very wide spectrum, too. I have no idea, to I want to be a cardiothoracic surgeon, right? So, wide spectrum, see where they're at, set goals for next steps. And I always try to tell kids, we can, sometimes a lot of kids want a perfect map of their future. While that's nice and it's good to plan, we also want to equip kids with the capability to pivot and navigate changes, because we all know that there's changes in curveballs. So, having the skills to know yourself and know your interests are really going to help you when you want to make a change. So, some of the outcomes, you can see I've written up here, I'm just going to tell you three stories really quickly about outcomes. So, one of the students that I've met with in my individual time, he is going to be financially completely independent at 18. So, he's graduating soon, and he's going to need, we have figured out that he needs a job that's going to make him $17 an hour. So, right now, we're working on what his skills are, we're getting his resume together, and we're looking at making some connections in the community that have opportunities for jobs within that price range. So, that's one of the things we're doing. I have another student, and that's the one in the picture there, who is interested in social work. As you know, social work can have agency social work, private practice social work, clinical social work, hospital social work. So, we connected her with a community member who has done private practice, agency, and hospital social work, and she was able to speak about each of the three types and give her a lot of valuable information that you wouldn't find just reading on the internet. What is your lifestyle like? What is the hours like? What is the demand? All of those things. So, just valuable connections. And then, the third one, I had a student who came in and actually said, I want to be a cardiothoracic surgeon, so we definitely can talk later. And she said, I'd like to job-shadow surgery. And I said, well, that's lovely, that doesn't, it's not really open to high school students, but let's talk about why. And what she wanted was to strengthen her application to the Baylor Rice Medical Scholar opportunity. So, we got to talking, and through that dialogue, when she left, I went on LinkedIn, which is newer for me, and I found a bunch of those Baylor Rice scholars. We looked at what they had done to get there, and we noticed that they all had done these medical summer camps. So, I talked to her again, and we've since applied to the U of M Summer Camp. We're still waiting to hear back, but just uncovering opportunities, right? That if you're not talking to someone about this one-on-one, you wouldn't know about. So, whole-school initiatives, as you guys on the board all know, we have this wonderful program called HAWK Teams Take the Lead. We have one-hour programming every week, and I get to implement all of my career readiness initiatives through our HAWK Team and our Take the Lead program. And so, the career aspect, in addition to all of the things that HAWK Teams and Take the Lead still has going on, we are going to expand our career speakers 9 through 12. We are going to embed Naviance into the regular programming. So, we have this lovely platform that we pay for our students to use that is really a wonderful and very rich career exploration platform called Naviance. And right now, we're going in a couple times a year with it, right? Because there's a lot going on. We are going to embed that into, like, some weekly programming in smaller doses, right? The attention span isn't there for a one-hour deep dive, but we could do 20 minutes regularly. And then, again, grade-specific and scaffolded. Sorry, I'm going to get this eventually. So, our yearly focus, 9th grade, we're going to up that to three career speakers, and we're going to really do a lot of our self-awareness stuff in 9th grade. We're going to really dive into the Naviance in 9th grade and really help them to understand, just like all the Project Lead the Way classes, what opportunities do you have in high school that can help you with that self-awareness and career exploration journey? So, understanding how to make the most of your course selection in high school. 10th grade, as always, 10th grade has always had our career speaker series, so those students are going to continue to hear a career speaker every other week, and they're going to have a culminating industry tour. Industry tour is like a fancy word for a group job shadow, but we're going to get them on buses and get them out onto a job site. What I love about that is you might go and think you're looking at an engineering program and totally think the HR department's cool. So, you never know what you're going to see. And then, 11th grade, we have SAT prep, we're going to continue that, but we're also going to do blitz rotations. That's going to be something new, where now kids in 10th grade, right? They've heard everything. We're going to target it in, and kids are going to hear about jobs that they select. So, each, for five weeks, we're going to have 10 career speakers a week, and they're going to get to hear three of them that they pick for 15-minute, 15- to 20-minute blitz rotations. So, at the end of five weeks, they'll have heard 15 career speakers, but it's ones that they have voice and choice in, which I think is really important. And then, 12th grade, as you guys know, the 12th graders run our senior, the seniors are leaders for the HAWK Teams, that culture, community-building group. So, as always, they're going to apply for different areas to run the HAWK Teams, and we're going to be working on flexibility, communication, all of those employability, universal skills. But we're also going to connect them with a professional mentor. So, mentors are going to be working with eight to 10 students, and they're going to do three in-person meetings and three Zoom meetings throughout the year. But our seniors are going to have to communicate with an adult in a profession, and it's so valuable, and I'm really excited to see all the things they'll take away from that. So, the total outcomes will be that by the time students graduate, they'll have met all their career targets, they'll have heard at least 31 speakers, they'll have been mentored by a professional, and have some real-world experience. That's the goal of this 912 program, which is really exciting. When I pitched some of this to Mrs. Palo, she was like, how are you going to get all these people? And I was like, yeah, I'm going to work on that. So, I'm going to go over kind of my survey. I was really fortunate, and thank you to all the Eastern K-12 principals, the whole Eastern side, elementary, middle, and high sent out a letter that I wrote, asking folks to fill out a Google form about their career, and I'll get to those results in a second. I also have an Instagram, EHSCareerLady, so if anyone wants to follow that. Got to do my plug since I'm here. And then, the last thing is I am really excited to share that I was asked to be a part of the Michigan Career Developmental, Career Developmental Model redesign. So, the state is currently under wonderful and very rich career exploration platform called Naviance. And right now, we're going in a couple of times a year with it, right? Because there's a lot going on. We are going to embed that into like some weekly programming in smaller doses, right? The attention span isn't there for a one-hour deep dive, but we could do 20 minutes regularly. And then again, grade-specific and scaffolded. Sorry, I'm going to get this eventually. So our yearly focus, ninth grade, we are going to up that to three career speakers. And we're going to really do a lot of our self-awareness stuff in ninth grade. We're going to really dive into the Naviance in ninth grade and really help them to understand, just like all the Project Lead the Way classes, what opportunities do you have in high school that can help you with that self-awareness and career exploration journey? So understanding how to make the most of your course selection in high school. 10th grade, as always, 10th grade has always had our career speaker series. So those students are going to continue to hear a career speaker every other week and they're going to have a culminating industry tour. Industry tour is like a fancy word for a group job shadow, but we're going to get them on buses and get them out onto a job site. What I love about that is you might go, go and think you're looking at an engineering program and totally think the HR department's cool. So you, you never know what you're going to see. And then 11th grade, we have SAT prep. We're going to continue that, but we're also going to do blitz rotations. That's going to be something new where now kids in 10th grade, right? They've heard everything. We're going to, we're going to target it in and kids are going to hear about jobs that they select. So each, for five weeks, we're going to have 10 career speakers a week and they're going to get to hear three of them that they pick for 15-minute, 15 to 20-minute blitz rotations. So at the end of five weeks, they'll have heard 15 career speakers, but it's ones that they have voice and choice in, which I think is really important. And then 12th grade, as you guys know, the 12th graders run our senior, the seniors are leaders for the HAWK Teams, that culture, community building group. So as always, they're going to apply for different areas to run the HAWK Teams. And we're going to be working on flexibility, communication, all of those employability, universal skills. But we're also going to connect them with a professional mentor. So mentors are going to be working with eight to 10 students. And they're going to do three in-person meetings and three Zoom meetings throughout the year. But our seniors are going to have to communicate with an adult in a profession and it's so valuable. And I'm really excited to see all the things they'll take away from that. So the total outcomes will be that, that by the time students graduate, they'll have met all their career targets, they'll have heard at least 31 speakers, they'll have been mentored by a professional and have some real-world experience. That's the goal of this 912 program, which is really exciting. When I pitched some of this to Mrs. Palo, she was like, how are you going to get all these people? And I was like, yeah, I'm going to work on that. So, um, so I'm going to go over kind of my survey. I was really fortunate and thank you to all the Eastern K-12 principals, the whole Eastern side, elementary, middle and high sent out a letter that I wrote asking folks to fill out a Google form about their career. And I'll get to those results in a second. I also have an Instagram, EHS Career Lady, so if anyone wants to follow that. Got to do my plug since I'm here. And then the last thing is I am really excited to share that I was asked to be a part of the Michigan Career Developmental, Career Developmental Model redesign. So the state is currently undergoing a redesign and I get to be a committee member. And in my last subcommittee, I was the only one on the committee that's actually working with students. So I'm really excited to have a voice at that level, right? And say, you know what? That doesn't make sense or that adds a lot of time. So I'm excited to have a voice in that. Okay. So I sent out a survey and within one week, our awesome community, so thank you everyone, I got 129 responses in one week of folks willing to commit their time and talk about their careers. So as you can see, I had a few different asks. So this is for those blitzes. 81% of the people that responded said, yes, I would come talk about what I do for a living for 15 minutes, three times in a row. I'd give an hour of my time. 61% of those people said that they would do a 30 to 45 minute, that's my sophomore whole class. I only need 13, right? So I get to really pick through that, which is exciting. 94% of people said they'd be willing to talk in a Zoom format, very low barrier of entry, right? They would do a phone call or Zoom with someone interested in their career. So what I'm gathering is a database, right? I'm just growing my database of jobs so that when kids are interested, I can connect them with someone in that career. And then the last one is, I had to put a maybe because this one's like a bigger ask. The last one is, would you be interested in doing what I, that senior mentoring? And it's basically a five-hour commitment over the whole year. So again, I had an overwhelming, I needed, I was hoping for 20 adults and I think, I'm not good at math, but that's more than 20. So. So I'm just so thankful and excited to work with all of these community members on expanding opportunities for kids. So this is my last slide. And if you're in the back, it says, the little stairs is the plan and at the end is what actually happens. And so it's really my goal and, and our goal here, you know, K-12 and education is to not only give kids, I want to help them understand themselves. That's what career exploration is. I don't, I don't think it's reasonable to think every 17-year-old is going to leave knowing exactly what they want to do. But I want them to know enough about themselves and what's out there that they can make a plan, but also have the skills to navigate when the plan needs to change. So that's it.
Thank you. So Nicole, that was fantastic and I won't add anything to that because everybody knows this is a personal passion of mine. So I won't add anything else other than you're on it, yes, for sure. And I might have a spreadsheet around on one of my computers that I might be able to send your way. Because anytime someone says, I'd be willing to help, I never lose a name or contact information. So.
Yes. Anyone wants to email me, andephrat@fhp.net. If you didn't fill out my form, there's still time.
Yes, we will get it to you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All right. With that, I think we are going to move into, I'm going to have to say this, the boring part of the meeting, because that was definitely the interesting part. Okay. All right. So with that, we are going to move on into the consent grouping section of our agenda. So with that, I think we are going to have our reports from our committees first and then we will approve our action items. Oh, we need a motion first. What am I doing first? Yes. So we need a motion to approve the consent grouping and then we'll have our reports. So do I have a motion to approve the consent grouping? Go, yes, sorry.
Yes, I moved it.
More than one, yes. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Fosson. Support. Excellent. Sorry about that. All right. So now we will move on into our reports. We will turn it over to Mrs. Gregory first.
Can you hear me? All right. All right. For the Finance Committee, we have a few action items, but just, I always like to share where we're at in the fiscal year and where we're at in the school year. So we're 75% through our fiscal year and 58% through the school year. Currently, we have a handful of action items, one including the approval of the meeting minutes from March 17th. We have the payment of bills as well, monthly bills. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven curriculum updates that we, a lot of detail, I'm sure curriculum will go into that individually, but it's for the upgrade of books and software totaling from the general fund $536,000. Then we have an update to our network server. When we do data and upgrades such as this, we typically go to a consortium and we look for consortium pricing. So this comes from our Capital Projects and this is for 2021 Capital Projects, excuse me, and this is for $208,000. We received 2,000 Chromebooks through the Emergency Connectivity Fund back a few months ago. I'm sure you guys remember that. And these devices are used for students to bring home with them. Those who need a device, you know, might not have one or their siblings have one, but they need their own individual. What we realized is they also need cases. We do not want these laptops breaking. So we have, we need an approval for $50,700 for the, the cases. And this comes from our SRT2 Equalization Fund. And then we have an interesting upgrade in expanding our technology in our transportation area, which is exciting because currently our bus drivers have very little information that they're obviously allowed to have in front of them. So this allows our bus drivers to have an iPad-esque in front of them to be able to know not only the direction of where to go, but also the stops they need to stop at. This also allows for the upgrade of the bus app. If anyone's used it, it's almost like Life 360, but it allows you to know when your child is, or when the bus is moving. And then another upgrade allows us to know when the child is actually on the bus. There's a lot of times children will get on the wrong bus and then all of a sudden it's a big, it's a big deal. My kids have done it. You get that call from the principal saying, we know where your child is, but they're just not here right now because they got on the wrong bus. It's a little scary. So this allows us to know the children have got on the right bus and we're able to know when they're in motion. And that's great for working parents so they can know exactly when they can, you know, pick the kids up at the bus stop. So that is another upgrade we will be doing. That's for, from the general fund and that's for $441,000. Not as exciting, but needed. We have some summer paving at Central Woodlands and Northern Middle and Northern High. These are two separate bid projects. In combination, they're for $1,970,000, $70,000, excuse me, including contingencies. And this comes from our 2021 Capital Projects as well. We also need the approval of the purchase of classroom furniture from a consortium collective, Custer, Great Lakes Furniture and others. And this is not to exceed $1,620,000. If you remember a while ago, we had teachers go and kind of pick out the best furniture. We went and priced that out and got the best pricing from this. So this is our 2021 Capital Projects as well. And our last is recommending to continue with our CPA firm, Manic Astero, excuse me. And that is for the 2021/22 audit. And it comes from the general fund, not to exceed $52,000. And that's just very important to our finances to make sure we have that audit at the end of the year. And then there's a few, I think, let me see, few bond updates. Again, if anyone is interested in what's going on, we have it on our homepage for the main FHPS website. There's a few projects that are going from just kind of phase changes right now, which was great for the kids to be able to come back from spring break or even prior to spring break, they moved into some of these new phases. So it was refreshing for them. They've been under construction for some time, so they feel like they've got their home back. We also have some work that's going forward in the buildings towards Central Middle. Central Middle is getting some work done right now. We're in some additional planning and we're out for bid on the Administration and Transition Center that will go in the Fine Arts Center property. So those are the updates, but if you want more detail, it is on the website. And I think that is it. It's a lot this month. Did I miss anything? No? Okay.
That was fantastic. And it's never boring. It's just not as interesting as listening to students, I should clarify. Yes. All right. Well, with that, if there are no questions, we will move over to a curriculum update. Maggie?
Yeah. So honestly, the, the bulk of our meeting was hearing from Nicole. So. Oh, not Nicole Gregory, Nicole Decrow. Yes, yes. And so she did her college and career readiness presentation for us as well. So that's great that everyone else was able to hear that today. And we just, we loved hearing that presentation, I think as much as everybody here loved hearing that presentation and are excited to see that get rolled out and to see the community members come in and work with the students and really kind of watching how this goes and maybe looking at it as a pilot of sorts for, for the other schools as well and how this works. And I think one of the things that we all agreed, we loved about this is that it's a fantastic way to get parents and community members back in the buildings and partnering with teachers and students. I, I think any opportunity to have them in the building is, is fantastic, but I love how intentional, how intentional this one is and for kids to get to hear from parents and community members about what they do and why that can be exciting and fun and maybe not something that they've thought about before. So fantastic program, looking forward to seeing that come to fruition. We also heard from Tamasha James. She gave a report out about her meeting with our Student Advisory Committee students right before spring break. She said it was a productive meeting. She said it was really just an opportunity for her to listen to what students were thinking about opportunities in the district. And one big takeaway that she had was how clear the students made it, that they felt so fortunate for the opportunities given to them in Forest Hills. They just, you know, they have friends in other districts and they feel like what Forest Hills has provided them in terms of extracurricular activities, things they can be a part of, just really go above and beyond course offerings and vested teachers and staff. And so they just felt very thankful for that. And then, yes, we did review a lot of different instructional material. Some of this we, we detailed at the last board meeting and that's what's on the agenda there today. And up for a new review is a 30-day review of Habitudes for Self-Leadership by Tim Elmore. It's for a leadership class taught here at Eastern High School. So that is new. And then they are looking for some updated textbook recommendations for things that are already in use, but just the newest versions. So yes, for TCI Geography Alive, for Connected Math for grades six through seven, the Digital Access, American History Connecting with the Past, the 16th Edition, and then the Practice of Statistics, the sixth edition. And then again, the ones that we talked about last month, which was the Earth Science for Environmental Science Class, Essentials of Geology, College Physics for AP Physics, American Government, Stories of a Nation for AP Government. And then, yeah, so that's what's on the list there for approval tonight. And then finally, this was not at our meeting, but I think it's worth noting because I do think it's curriculum-related. If you have not had a chance to go to the Fine Arts Center currently, you should because we have a lot of student art on display through May 2nd. And I think it's really amazing to see what our best artists in the district create. And it's just really fun to read their descriptions and to see what they've been working on. And that's it.
Thank you, Maggie. Any questions for Maggie? That's always a fun meeting to go to. All right. Superintendent Beam, are there any things in the consent grouping, that big long list? That's our longest list for a while, that you would like to draw our attention to?
Only one, the final one in the consent grouping, and that's a recommendation to employ a social worker to fill a vacancy that we have, Shelby Simpson. That's all I have for tonight.
All right. Fantastic. With that, now we are going to have a roll call vote. So CJ, this will be your first go around and Kristen is going to run the show. Here we go. Oh, and it is such a show. Mr. Mashad?
Yes, to all?
Mrs. Gregory?
Yeah.
Dr. Fosson? Mrs. Vonck? Mrs. Tryon?
Yes.
Ms. Cavell, yes? And Mrs. Callahan?
Yes.
Show over.
All right. Well done. All right. With that, I think at this point, we are going to see if there is any board communication to share. Yeah, we, did we skip over that? We did? Oh, okay. Well, we'll do, we'll do that and then, yes, there we go. Well, you do your part and then we'll see if you have anything to say about it.
Deal. All right. That sounds good. Thank you. I'd just like to say thank you to Eastern Middle School for hosting us here tonight. It's great to be here at Eastern, the home of the Hawks. And again, a wonderful job for our, our student presenters tonight on Project Lead the Way. And again, Nicole, thank you so much for your presentation on college and career readiness and all the things that are happening there. We're, we're excited to take this pilot and take it to all three of our high schools as well. So we'll, we'll put a network together and we can engage our entire community in helping our kids see what life looks like beyond high school as well. I'd just like to piggyback on some statements earlier about our Student Advisory Council. We had our final meeting with the Student Advisory Council. We had a few members of the board able to join us and to have high school students from all three of our high schools, boy, it really is inspirational to see these students in action. They really lead these meetings. They set the agenda and we're there as resources. And it's great to hear them take ownership of their education and leadership among their peers. I want to thank Mrs. Vonck for all of her work in getting the Student Advisory Council off the ground some time ago during a different stage of the pandemic. So that was great to finish off the year here face-to-face with that group and I look forward to seeing them again as we go forward. I'd like to say a few words about things that we are thinking about at the district level. Certainly, we've talked a little bit about this previously with members of the board, but also for the community. And that is, we're looking to engage on strategic planning, really looking forward into our future and specifically looking at things that we've got a lot going on already in the area of secondary redesign, for instance. You saw some of that here tonight as Mrs. Decrow spoke about the Hawks Lead the Way and HAWK Teams. And we've seen lots of things that are going on at Northern and Central is engaged with work as well and additional study with International Baccalaureate and a variety of pieces there. This is very exciting. As we think of the 4,400 hours that kids spend in high school, we want to make sure that more and more of that time is really connected to kids practicing and doing the things and being exposed to the things that happen in the adult world of work. Mrs. Decrow talked a little bit about that tonight and we want to embed more and more of those experiences right into our classrooms. And that involves even greater collaboration with our members of our community and employers and people who work in a variety of fields all around West Michigan. We're fortunate to be in a vibrant area economically with a huge range of employment and career opportunities. But embedding that in with our work in secondary redesign will also be an element that we look at with our strategic plan. We're just beginning these conversations around strategic planning, but it's something that you can expect to hear more about from me and from the board as we move forward to engage our staff members, to engage our community as well in this work in the months to come. So I just wanted to put a little plug in there tonight and placeholder and know that we'll be talking about this more and more as we go forward. I'd also like to piggyback on Mrs. Gregory's comments about our work with the bond. Our bond work has taken us to several buildings already and many of these projects continue to move forward. Orchard View is an extensive renovation project that's happening at that school over 25 months there. We've had renovation projects at all three of our high schools, Eastern, Northern and Central High School. Thorn Apple just went through one of these transitions in the building and it continues on and will continue on with that project through next December. Also at Collins Elementary, we just also had a transition of some new spaces over at Collins to students and they're very excited about that. I was able to see those students. I was able to see those students as those, the sort of the construction wall came down and the new spaces were unveiled to them. Very exciting to see. Central Middle School has just begun with that work here at spring break. We've just begun there and that will take us through, again, another couple of years as we go forward with Central Middle School. And then Pine Ridge and Ada Vista are right on the heels of these projects as well. We'll be coming to both of those buildings. Ada Vista, as some of you know, as your kids went through, there is a different building that we inherited long ago and we hope to give ourselves a little bit more elbow room in that building and as we're going through a great renovation work all the way through. And we're excited that our Transitions Program for our students age 18 to 26 will be a part of us as we look to add on at the Fine Arts Center as we make spaces for the administrative offices for the district. And so having students there in our Transitions Program there, that will be part of closer connections to the community. And again, as we think about employability skills, that'll be a wonderful piece. Again, I thank the Community Task Force for their recommendation with the administrative offices. And this will help us be more efficient on the operating side of the budget, which allows us to put those dollars back into the classroom. So exciting things that are happening there and this work continues for several more years, really. And we have additional buildings that I haven't listed here tonight that we'll be coming to as well as we continue on and thanks to the community's support. I'd just like to point out that the items that we saw here tonight, that students presented, the items that we saw Mrs. Decrow talk about and the connections with our community, the Student Advisory Council, the work that we're planning to do with strategic planning, and all the work that we're doing on renovations and modernizations in our buildings with an eye towards students and their needs in the 21st century. I see the theme of collaboration threaded through all of those elements. So we have incredibly talented people throughout our community that help in so many different ways. And it's when people come together and give the best of their ideas and their thinking and what they have. I was just thinking of our meeting with the Forest Hills Public Schools Foundation last week. And again, talk about a group that embodies collaboration in so many different ways. When they come in to help our teachers and our staff, great things happen for kids. So thank you to all of those different folks that come in and say, hey, how can we help to make improvements and to make an environment for our kids where they will thrive for their future? So just wanted to say thank you for all that collaboration. That concludes my report tonight.
You stole my word.
I'm sorry, was that your word?
That's going to be my word for the night. Yes.
You could see it in so many different areas. Right up there as well.
I know, I noticed that too. All right. So with that, thank you. That is a great report. Any questions for the superintendent?
I just have a comment.
Board communications, you're up.
Thank you so much for all the work you've done. I remember 10-plus years ago when we were working with the foundation for the project innovation at that point and the pieces were maybe discombobulated or fragmented. And now, just as you said, you're seeing the spaces and the curriculum and everything's, you know, coming together. So thank you for continuing down that path and not being distracted because I know it's easily to happen.
Thank you, Nicole. You know, the biggest thanks really go to our teachers. They're the frontline folks that make all of this happen. We can, we can talk about these things, but it's our teachers, it's our counselors, it's our principals, it's our aides who are in these spaces each and every day that are helping with it, you know? And it's, it's not just those staff members. You know, I was talking with a bus driver and the bus driver reinforcing these ideas with our kids. Bus driver shared with me the gratitude and appreciation that kids shared with the bus driver. So it goes from our food service folks who are here and our custodians that are role models for our kids and mentors for our kids as well. So it's a huge piece on that. Thank you.
All right. Is there any board communication this evening? Yes, Maggie, take it away.
Yeah, so for the foundation, exciting that all foundation grants have been passed out now, so I can share a few of those. I didn't want to give any of those away at the last meeting because they were in the process of being passed out. But foundation members had an amazing time visiting classrooms around the district to pass out grants. So I wanted just to highlight a few of them. So one, for example, and this is a great, this one is a great example of the PTO coming alongside the foundation to create a grant opportunity for a teacher. Adam Savislac at Northern Hills Middle School received about $15,000 for, it's called a VEX IQ Applied STEM Learning. That's not a phrase I often say. And it is for robotics kits for students to build their own robots and then program their robots to do certain things. And so this, like I said, is a great example where the PTO and the foundation came together to fund this larger request. The PTO was able to fund a small component of the request, the drones that they needed that interface with the robots and robotic programming from the students. So that was one exciting grant that was given out. Another one, David Howard at Northern High School and Jeff Manders at Central High School were each awarded grants totaling about $11,000 for new remote digital recording cameras for their high school news broadcasting classes. The district recently upgraded each high school's broadcasting newsrooms where students produce and air a newscast every day. And they needed, the teachers needed smaller remote video cameras for students to use while making their individual news stories. So the foundation also helped Eastern High School in a similar way. Another one, Emily Hanlon, a new teacher at Nap Forest. She was awarded $1,000 to get easy reader, high-interest graphic novels for her resource room students. Another fun one is Beth Dondit from Goodwilly was able to purchase all-new sleeping bags. The sleeping bags they were using were about 20 years old. And those sleeping bags get used and so they were able to get new ones for their several night trip to the Sleeping Bear Dunes. And so they have some clean sleeping bags. And another one, Matt Tracy from Northern High was awarded about $3,000 for a Farmbot, which is a robotic system that assists anyone with a small plot of land and a desire to grow food with planting, watering, soil testing, and weeding. Students can digitally program the Farmbot to water their plants and it collects data like soil composition, percentage of water in the soil, amount of sunlight per day. And then the students in Project Next will be using this grant. And there's a lot more. Those were just a few highlights. I think it's really cool to see the variety of grants that are passed out. They're so different, each teacher's needs, and just how they really support those rigorous academics that we are looking for. And then finally, State of the District Luncheon, that's coming up on May 5th, like we talked about before, at Watermark. We will hear an update from Dan on the district at that time. But more importantly, the foundation is going to highlight middle school students at that luncheon. So middle school students from each of our attendance zones and just all the great things that are happening in our middle schools. And then we will also award the prizes for the art and essay contest winners at that luncheon. That is the foundation.
Fantastic. Great updates. Any questions for Maggie about the foundation? Okay, any other board communications? I have a couple of quick things. Okay. The only, I guess, one thing that I wanted to mention, actually, this is kind of related to what Nicole was sharing this evening, is the academic boosters groups at all three high schools have come together. And I was, I stopped by the Northern Booster Meeting on Friday. There is an event, it's the Path to Pro Skilled Trades Event that will be at the Fine Arts Center, April 25th from 6:30 to 8:30. And there will, in that case, there will be some booths set up, but there will also be a panel discussion. So just like when we would have a college panel, this is trades people, well, a variety of industries and people in different careers that will be there. So this is for parents and students to go to. This is following up on a skilled trade event that they hosted up in Rockford that was for a community-wide, it was, of course, it was our, I shouldn't say of course, but of course, it was Forest Hills parents that organized it, but they opened it up community-wide. And 80, 100 students showed up and were investigating different careers in skilled trades. So that was at the end of March. But Path to Pro, April 25th, Fine Arts Center, 6:30 to 8:30 PM. There's no RSVP or anything ahead of time, the more the merrier. So that is that. And the other thing I wanted to do was welcome CJ to the board officially. I put my, not that everybody's reading this, but I put a little memo out on the district webpage welcoming CJ. And I think it goes right to collaboration and community. We had the opportunity to review letters of interest from approximately 27 community members who said, sure, we're willing to step up and volunteer and be a part of the school board. From that group, we had a great process and we were able to spend an afternoon and evening getting to know approximately nine community members. And it was so invigorating and exciting to sit and meet nine different people that have interests and passion to volunteer as a member of the school board. And it was wonderful to welcome CJ. I encourage all of you to get, come and introduce yourself to CJ. We were wowed. He is, he can tell you more about himself, but the thing that we love, well, maybe Mary loves this the most, is he said, well, I'm at least here for 17 years, being a dad of four, four young students. So we know we have someone that was born and raised in the community, has unique career and personal interests that will complement the skill set. So he has history and he has longevity and a willingness to stay with us for a long time. So very, very personally happy about that and we were able to enjoy lunch together. So hopefully, everybody else will get a chance to do that sometime, too. So that would be my most exciting thing I wanted to share, Path to Pro. And I think that is it. Any other board communications? All righty. Okay, well, we only have one more thing before we adjourn and that is an opportunity for public comments. So for anybody that would like to make a public comment, now would be the time to do that. And I will draw your attention to a couple of things that, and this may be up on the podium there, it usually is, but Val has a copy. We have the guidelines for public participation. If you could please come up, state your name and your address, and then limit your comments to three minutes. We would love for it to be related to, oh, I guess I should back up from that. We, everything that comes to us in public comments, we all take notes and listen to. But for anybody that's making a public comment for the first time, we are not going to respond directly to any of the public comments today. We take copious notes, we follow up with, if anybody sends us emails afterwards or if there's an action item where something seems unique that it's at a school level that may be needed to get resolved there, we'll make sure that, we've got administrators here, that we make sure that it gets taken care of that way. So that is how this will work. I would like to invite, because we're also doing this at the end, I'm going to ask if any students would like to make a public comment, we'd invite them to come up first, if that would be okay, because we're about the kids. Love the adults, but we'll start with the kids. If there are any kids that would like to make a comment, and then after that, we'll welcome any adults that would like to speak. So that is the plan. Are there any students that would like to address the board tonight? Oh, wow, okay. I wasn't expecting that. Okay, go for it.
Hi, my name is Kason Wooders. I live at 3877 Lake Bird Street Northeast, and I'm an eighth grade student here at Eastern Middle. I'd like to begin by thanking the board for their time and consideration of this topic. I realize I'm not the first one speaking about this issue, but I do hope I'm one of the last. A few months ago, I was one of many students excited and optimistic about our newly announced Mackinac Island trip. I was also one of the many students left disappointed by the recent decision to cancel all current planned overnight trips. This trip is something that eighth grade has looked forward to and been preparing for for a while. The trip is an amazing opportunity for students to have a fun few days with their friends, to make lifelong memories, and a great way to promote hands-on learning outside of a classroom. Although I can't speak for people from Northern and Central, those I have talked to seem pretty upset about the cancellation of trips, just like the Eastern trip. That is why a couple of weeks ago, my peers and I started a petition, which I have here if you're interested in seeing, so we could get fellow students' perspectives on the topic, as well as from other middle schools in the district. Within the few weeks that the petition had been circulating, it had reached 165 signatures from both parents and students in the Forest Hills Public Schools District. One day for this type of trip is simply not enough. It takes roughly four hours to get to Mackinac Island and then four hours back. An eight-hour day on the bus alone is pretty rough. Now imagine walking around all day on top of that. I'm asking the board to review this recent decision or at least clarify their reasoning behind it. Thank you.
Thank you. If you would like to, if there's documentation that you wanted to leave with us to review, you could hand it to Mrs. Clements and she can share it with the board. Thank you for participating. Are there any other comments this evening?
I'm Cindy Camp and I live at 8300 Two Mile Road in Ada. In recent months, I've been attending these meetings more regularly to better understand the vocal concerns about our schools. As a parent of two boys who attend one of the district high schools, I appreciate many aspects of our school district and particularly our teachers, staff, administration, and school board. This has been an especially hard time to work in education and I'm immensely grateful to all of you who do that work. At the same time, our school district is not perfect and there are real concerns about curriculum, bus service, health precautions, and civil discourse. These are all important topics and it's crucial for our district to achieve the right balance between tradition and innovation, freedom and responsibility, the individual, and the greater community. The marriage of Gerald and Betty Ford is perhaps a useful model for steering through challenging times. They were two very different people. Gerald Ford was an establishment Republican who ultimately served as president. He pardoned Richard Nixon and steered the Republican Party through difficult days. Betty Ford was a staunch supporter of reproductive freedom and the Equal Rights Amendment. The image of her dancing on the White House Cabinet Room table is memorable. No doubt, at times, there was a spicy marriage. But married they were and married they stayed, navigating conflict and respecting differences while remaining united. I bring them up here as a symbol of commitment. At this moment, we're facing hard issues and big challenges and we must be united in a commitment to the good of our young people. We have a strong district, a strong community, and strong leadership. Let's work together and support each other to continually make it better. Thank you all for listening. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kelly and I live in the Forest Hills School District. First off, I'd like to voice my appreciation of the creation of a system to evaluate books that are challenged or brought into our school libraries. It's a good start for a much-needed system. Additionally, this system needs to include the libraries within our teacher classrooms. We currently have a sitting board member publicly advocating for parents and citizens to circumvent any new book policies by donating books directly to the teacher libraries and not the school libraries. Teacher libraries are not cataloged and most teachers do not have a listing of every book that is in their library. Because teachers are already overworked, many parents have offered to give their time to help catalog, catalog these books. Win-win. Teachers don't have to do the mundane task and they'll have a complete list of books in their classroom. I won't read any direct passages from any of the numerous sexually explicit books in our school district, but even if I did, I would not be violating any federal nor state copyright law. Reading passages is covered under the fair use doctrine rule, so parents, read away. Some parents say we are out to ban books. What a sensational and catchy phrase. That would be great if it were true. It's not. There are millions of books available for librarians to choose from. Because a certain book is not in the library does not mean that librarian has banned that book. Parents are not out to ban books. We are committed to removing the filth from our school libraries that is polluting and making chaos of our children's minds. Many of these books would not be allowed in our state prison system for their graphic Many of these books would not be allowed in our state prison system for their graphic, sexual, and violent content, yet somehow, parents are supposed to be okay with it being in the hands of our ten, eleven, and twelve-year-olds. If a person were to use the language used in these books towards a coworker, they would rightfully be charged with sexual harassment. If a student were to text the content in these books to another student, they would also be charged with sexting and charged appropriately. Yet somehow, this content is okay for our minors. I've heard, oh, well, that parents can opt their child out of reading a book, or these books are in the high school. If a book is in the district, regardless of what building library it resides, it can be checked out by any student in the district. With regards to parents opting their child out of a specific book, this would be great if we knew what books were in each library, or that each book had been given a thorough vetting process. This is not the case, and just recently, a questionable book was given in a classroom for a student to read out loud. No advance notice was given to any of the parents. This happens time and time again, so our concerns on this matter are not unfounded. I spoke back at the October 2017 school board meeting and requested that the labeling of our kids needed to stop, that the sexualization of our children needed to stop. Sadly, things have gotten far worse. Please stop polluting and making chaos of our children's minds, remove the filth from our libraries, and get back to what our focus should be, teaching our kids math, reading, science, and other subjects without the social engineering and labeling. Thank you.
My name is Doug Lee, and I'm a resident at Forest Hills. We've been here over a year, and this board has not listened to us. So I thought I'd school you on a little bit of education today, and I do appreciate being at the end, therefore, we can comment on what your topics were today. So I do appreciate that. First thing I want to do is educate on the word equity versus equality. So a word that's used here quite heavily, but obviously, I really don't think everybody understands the meaning. Equality. Equality is an opportunity to perform according to the effort that one applies. If anybody has more than one kid, we understand equality, because you have one kid who may does their homework more than the others, they get a better grade. Now, the kid doesn't do the homework, they get a lesser grade. That's what equality is. Equity, on the other hand, is allow students to perform and learn at the exact same level. And that's what we're doing in our schools. We're marginalizing our kids. Equity in Forest Hills. First of all, it's reduced the amount of AP classes. It reduces, it's a reduction of core classes. Its competition is discouraged. It pushes students to the next level at all costs, and all students are equal at all One of the students brought up a Mackinac trip. The Mackinac trip fell victim to equity. First of all, in the curriculum meeting this, this week, it was brought up on the board, your board, that Mackinac was canceled because there were five students that wanted the same room. There were medication issues, how to, how to disperse medication. There were students who could not afford it. These are all discussions. It was decided to, for equity purposes, we will eliminate the overnight trip. I'm sure one discussion that was not in the curriculum meeting but behind closed doors is how do you deal with the gender identity? It was not publicly, but I'm sure it was on your mind. So let me school you on another word, inequity. An average bus driver in our district costs taxpayers nineteen dollars an hour. The lowest-paid individual in the, in our administration building costs taxpayers forty-two dollars an hour. That's called inequity.
Hello. My name is Stephanie Boone. My address is on file. As most of you know by now, I'm running for Kent County Commissioner right here in District Five. And on the morning of March 20, I woke up to over one hundred anonymous voice text messages, voicemails, texts, emails, filling my mailboxes, from a person claiming to be my campaign manager. And he pulled an all-nighter. He started at midnight and went through 6:00 AM, commentating on each and every one of my Facebook campaign page posts, as well as my website, giving me his version of advice for my campaign. Many of the messages were sexual and threatening in nature. This individual is openly gay and very upset that I am what he calls a homophobe, a bigot, a racist, and other names that he used at school to call me. I was doxxed, I was signed up for spam calls, texts, and emails, and even a few gay porn sites. He also made the mistake of posting my personal contact info on his Instagram profile, encouraging the public to give me a piece of their mind because I am running for office as a Republican, and said that I deserve everything that comes my way, and I better get right with God before I die. I found myself looking around that morning, wondering if I should be boarding up my windows and hunkering down in my basement and holding my kids a little bit tighter. Of course, I called the police, and I am so thankful that they were available to help me that morning. They weren't stuck downtown in a BLM riot with a burning police car, so I'm very thankful for that. Turns out, this was a 2020 grad of Forest Hills Eastern. Co-editor-in-chief of the Hawke Herald, co-president of the Student Government, an active and proud member of the FHPS Global Learners Initiative, violinist and concert master, U of M student, put on a pedestal for all to be proud of, and now, he can add inmate of Kent County Jail to his resume. This is a product of Forest Hills Public Schools and Global Learners Initiative. After evading the police for a couple days, he was taken into custody, and on April 9, charges for malicious use of telecommunications services are what he was arraigned on. I'm sure that you're going to blame this on COVID, too, and I'm sure you would say that more Esser dollars and mental health interventionists could have helped him. I'm here to tell you that a solid combo of good parenting and schools that teach academics and respect instead of hatred and racism toward others for the color of their skin, political or sexual preference, this is what these kids need. They need good parenting and solid teaching at school, academics. Everywhere we look, all these awesome programs you're bringing in. Go to the website tonight for the PLTW, the Project Lead the Way. It's like, it seems like an awesome program. Go to their website, and you're going to find right away their commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Why is that? Just teach our kids the basics.
I'm going to pause for a sec. Are you going to?
I'm going to put a disclaimer.
Okay.
No worries.
Okay.
They should probably leave. This is part of the speech. I'm asking them to leave.
You are welcome to do this. I'm just going to toss one thing out there for you to consider. I know we spoke after the last meeting, and there is a book review process, so if you want, you can go ahead, we can't stop you from doing this, but I'm just going to let you know, that was new last time, so if you would like to submit this book for the review, you can. Otherwise, if you'd like to proceed, go for it.
There appears to be no committee that has been convened or created for the purpose of doing reviews.
There, there is a review process for, we-
The process requires community input from members of the community to review the books. There has been no public announcement of who is going to be selected for this, how to, how to announce oneself for this, to show their interest for it. We haven't seen any of that in the last month.
I'm just saying, if you would like to do that, Mr. Haye would be happy to go through that. If you would like to go ahead and make your public comment, that's fine. I just want to make sure-
I can wait until the end, but I will go.
Okay.
If you'd like me to sit down and wait till the end, I'm happy to do that.
I think, unless anybody else has any other comments, you might be the end.
This fellow would like to go.
Good evening. My name is Tom Briggs. Before I begin, I'd like to take a moment to thank Julie Davis for stopping by the transportation lounge last week and dropping off some pastries for us. I didn't get a chance to thank you personally. But speaking for myself and others, we sincerely appreciate someone from Admin stopping by and spending a few minutes with us. Also, to the parents groups who've been so kind to provide us with a luncheon several times throughout the school year, thank you so much. I've been a bus driver for Forest Hills for over twenty years. The first eleven years as a substitute driver. That was my choice, as it fit nicely into the summer business I owned as a campground operator. At that time, however, you could figure on at least a year or two of subbing before a regular route job became available. Today, you can pick your route from about ten spots open even before you finish your training and get your license. Forest Hills needs more substitute drivers. It would fill so many holes in our transportation system. Having a pool of substitutes, as we did back in the day, would help in several ways. It would keep office people in the office, it would keep garage people in the garage, it'd give the regular drivers some relief so they wouldn't feel so stressed, and would relax parents, give them less worry, to worry about, and keeping the students from driving to school and even causing major traffic headaches that we're seeing around all the schools every single day. Here's why I believe we do not have a pool of substitutes, and having over ten years of experience is one, I think I got a pretty good insight. Substitutes have the most difficult job in transportation. They get no benefits, they basically have no support group, and they get paid crap. Even in ideal weather conditions, they're driving a strange route in a strange bus, often in the dark with kids they have no relationships with, and who in many cases have no idea even how to get home, let alone where their stops are. I know that subs got a raise early in the year to go along with the regular drivers, but even a sub with many years of experiences earning fifty cents an hour, less than a new driver off the road, even as they start their training. And that doesn't even include, include a new driver bonus. Good-experienced substitutes need to be paid at least twenty dollars an hour. I believe that change would bring back some of our former drivers and bring in other qualified drivers from other districts. Twenty dollars an hour is cheap for a good-quality substitute driver. You wouldn't have to pay them that much until they prove themselves, because they have no contract as a regular driver does. If they didn't or couldn't prove themselves, you could simply not assign them to a route. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments? Yes. Okay.
Hello again. After, I'm Jared, and after a number of our cozy monthly meetings, I'm okay being on a first-name basis. Anyway, I'm a student of history, and so should be this board and every parent regarding John Dewey and his history as the renowned founding father of our modern public school system. And history does connect the dots from Dewey to such programs as CRT and social-emotional learning today. Mr. Dewey was the self-described progressive educator who, some eighty years ago, was obsessed with transforming America's public schools into progressive instruments for, wait for it, social ethical learning. Doesn't, sounds a bit familiar, doesn't it? Anyway, Dewey made a publicized pilgrimage to communist Russia to study and celebrate the miraculous success of that government's education system brutally imposed by Joseph Stalin. Stalin, you know, the power-mad tyrant who would mass murder many more millions than Hitler. Dewey truly admired Stalin, and both were on historic record declaring what must be done to implement and sustain proper government control of its citizens, namely, a progressive government must-control education. Dewey enthusiastically declared that Stalin, through government education, was, and I quote, "creating a new world free from subjection of the past." So what was the subjection to the past Dewey and Stalin despised? Well, both being devout atheists, both truly believed old-fashioned religious faith, adhering to family values, traditional beliefs, and individual liberties, all were impediments to properly controlling, over the long term, citizens and parents. You know, the enlightened peasants such as us. Dewey actually envied Stalin, because that tyrant did not have hurdles such as our old US Constitution and our traditional unwoke American values getting in his way. Dewey knew America would require several generations of his dedicated elite disciples to control our higher education, to chip, chip, chip away, and ultimately convert future teachers and, of course, school administrators to embrace, propagate, preach, and teach his progressive dogma. And so here we are. Yes, you hopefully have ushered into your father's ultimate goals. I'm sorry. Just ten more seconds. Well, anyway, to be continued. See you next month.
All right. Any other comments?
Fair enough. By the way, as a disclaimer, this presentation is rated R for violence and sexuality. I recommend that all children and all adults of a weak constitution to leave at this point. I do want to thank the board for creating a book review policy. However, the current method is currently buried deep in a policy manual in a section 5407-F. It's not very easily accessible to the average parent. A link on your main page to the policy would certainly help. Secondly, while I was told that there would be a reconsideration committee formed from the members of the community, I haven't seen a posting, an email, a Facebook post for this. Thus, as I understand it, this policy is currently not in effect, and nothing is really being done about inappropriate books. Therefore, this is The Clockwork Princess by Cassandra Clare. As you can see from the stamp, it can be checked out of a Forest Hills Public School Library, specifically Central High, Eastern High, Middle, Central Middle, Northern Hills Middle, and Northern Trails, where there are fifth graders as young as ten years old who have access to this book. I will be reading several passages. Unfortunately, I have to change a few of the words here and there, because the parents are currently debating Mr. Gilbert regarding copyright doctrine. Page 255. Page 417. Page 432. Page 439. Now contrary to the slander of others in this room, I do not believe in book bans, but this book belongs in a public library, not in the hands of 10-year-olds without their parental consent from the school library. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments tonight? Oh, here she comes. She's rolling up here.
Good evening. My name is Lori Rowan. I've lived in the district for over 40 years and I just want to say, first of all, welcome, CJ. And I also want to just say I support the board. I support all the teachers. We heard such wonderful things tonight from the middle school students on how they learn. How I learned when I was in school in the 60s and 70s is different than how my children learned when they were in the district, and it's going to be the same thing. Education evolves. Our whole world evolves and we have to have schools that are ready and able to adapt to the changes that all of our children are facing. So thank you for being thoughtful, thank you for listening, and thank you for doing such a great job with our kids.
Okay.
I just want to say thank you to the Advent for stopping by and visiting the transportation department because I'm sure that means a lot to them. You know, we have, as a community, have been trying to do a lot more for transportation, showing them appreciation, showing them that we see them, we hear them, we appreciate them, we need them. So I'm very grateful to hear that we're extending that beside the community, so I appreciate that. The other thing that I would like to know is how are we, as a district, addressing the shortage of the drivers? We still haven't really heard an update as to what's going to happen. I know that we are already short and there is talk that we will be short even more drivers at the end of the year, so it would be nice to know now what the district is going to do to address that. Thank you.
All right. All right. Again, thank you, everybody, for sharing your comments tonight. Everybody takes great notes on all of these. Some of these are immediate action items that require follow-up and they all go into future discussions that we have as a board or within the administrator, within the actual district. At this time, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Support. And a second. And we are adjourned. Have a good night.